You say I can.
Okay, I got it.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, April 3rd City Commission Meeting. I'm glad to see we have a lot of people in the audience tonight because we have some exciting things to do tonight, which is involving some of our younger citizens. But I will ask Mr. Lee to do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. Would you all join me by standing and let's do the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So tonight, we have one proclamation and I have one thing out of my bag here, and it has to do with Arab American Heritage Month. And before I get to the proclamation, I just want to do an announcement for the Parks Department and our other departments that are funding this. So on Sunday, April 14th, 2024, from 12:00 to 3:00 at the Pioneer Community Center, located at 615 Fifth Street, Oregon City, we are having a Middle Eastern, North African Heritage Fest, and it's being sponsored by a grant from the Oregon City Arts Commission. Oregon City School District is participating, obviously, the city of Oregon City, and the YMCA Columbia Willamette and Soul Flags. So we hope everybody can go out and have some fun. It says there'll be culture specific events. There'll be 1:00 PM in Arab folk dancing, and at 2:00 PM, there'll be Ghanaian drumming, and there will also be some food available there, and lots of tables with information. So I hope you'll all be able to attend. And I do believe what typically we do, we always have a display at the Oregon City Library, which highlights one of our diversity events. So let me get to the proclamation. So, "Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, businesses, education, technology, government, military service, and culture. And whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends, which also sets fine examples of model citizens and public officials. Whereas they have brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, diversity and faith and creed that have added strength to our democracy. And whereas Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing the entrepreneurial spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous, and whereas they join all Americans in the desire to see peaceful and diverse society, where each individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas incredible contributions of heritage and of Arab Americans has helped build our better nation. Now therefore, I Denise C. McGriff hereby proclaim April 2024 as Arab American Heritage Month, and the commission encourages all citizens to learn and celebrate the important contributions Arab Americans have made in Oregon City, Blackmanus County, Oregon, and across America." Thank you so much. So next on our agenda is citizen comments. Is there anyone who, do we have any slips from anyone or comments for tonight?
No, Mayor, we do not.
One is coming.
How we do?
Uh, well, no, if it says it's item number 10, then we'll do it under item number 10. All right. So tonight on our agenda, we have several presentations, and the first one is something that I'm really excited about, as well as I will speak for Commissioner Marl. He's excited about it, too, since we jointly worked on this. So this is the If I Were Mayor Contest winners. And we have a number of our winners in the audience, and they're going to bring over the winning posters. And I'm going to wander on down that way.
On your face. They can come out.
Um, I don't know. My mouth sort of kills me.
Yep, she's got it. So did you want to give a little introduction?
Hello? Is it on? Yes. My name is Hannah Schmidt, and I am the Community Engagement Specialist for the City of Oregon City, and it's my pleasure to be the city liaison for the Youth Advisory Commission. This year, the Youth Advisory Commission and the mayor of Oregon City judged the If I Were Mayor contest. And this is a statewide competition that takes place through the state of Oregon, but this is Oregon City's first year that we participated in the competition locally. So my boss and I worked on advertising that, as well as the Youth Advisory Commission members, and we had a plethora of applications and submissions come in, and the Youth Advisory Commission and the mayor worked very hard diligently during our meeting in February, no, March, in March, to be able to evaluate all of the submissions and judge them. And the contestant winners will be announced and awarded tonight. The first place winners for both the categories of essay and the poster contest will be awarded $75 cash along with beautiful certificates. Second place for the poster competition will be awarded $50, and third place for the poster competition will be awarded 25. So I just want to thank everyone who participated in this competition, even if you were not a winner within the competition. It was a joy for me as a staff liaison to be able to see all of the beautiful submissions that everyone was able to contribute to the competition, and I look forward to see this competition grow in the future anymore. So anyone that you know, fourth grade through 12th grade, there's three categories within the competition, and that'll be advertised in the future next year. In the spring of April is when the competition moves on to the state. And so these submissions have been, the first place submissions have been moved forward into the state competition. But for next year, keep your eye out around February and the winter to be able to see us advertised next year, and we look forward to seeing your submissions and your entries. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Yes, so there is a, the city of Oregon City belongs to an organization called the League of Oregon Cities, and within that organization, there is a group called the Oregon Mayors Association, of which I'm a member. So last year was my first conference, and we met in Hood River, and I was very excited to see this contest going on and got to see the winners from the other jurisdictions be submitted, and it's a really big deal for the Oregon Mayors Association. So I said to our city manager, can we do it next year? I think we have some very talented and deserving students in our school district that might be interested. So it was open to all residents of Oregon City, whether you lived, if you were in the Oregon City School District. We solicited to private homeschoolers, to the schools of Case and Ochsla, so we hit everybody that we could find, and then also the private schools that are within our boundaries. So we had a lot of people who got the information, and as Hannah said, we had a lot of applications to judge. It was kind of exciting. And like I said, I hope we continue this in the future, even when I'm not the mayor. So I would like to, first of all, call up Gabriel. Would you like to come on up? And he was our first place winner in the essay contest, so let's give him a round of applause. So this is a City of Oregon City pin. When we get your certificate, we'll get the photo op here. So here's your certificate and your award. I'm going to set this down. And we're going to do a photo op. Is that okay? So stick that in your pocket, because Mom and Dad and everybody else that's here from your family wants to get this. So this is your certificate. And if you want to hold it like that, Brianna, you want to get on one side of them, and I'll get on the other side. So is there anything you want to say about your essay that, because they haven't seen it. So is there anything that was particularly interesting to you or inspiring to you? So if you were mayor, you would do?
Well, I would do a lot of things, and mostly doing things like fundraisers and helping people get homes, along with some other things like tourist attractions.
Okay, awesome. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, and let's close this up. Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Next in our poster contest, and they are here. So we'll start with our third place winner, and that is this one right here?
Yes.
So Bowden, come on up. I see your fan club is here, right? So what inspired you, you go over here on this side, what inspired you on the things that you have here? So you have a few things. I would make more homes for the elderly.
Um, I know a lot of elderly people. I know a lot of elderly people aren't greatly cared for like they should be, and I really think they should have a lot more places they're able to stay and get cared for.
All right. We'll talk to our planning community development director about getting more zoning for that. So anyway, so we are very proud and excited, and thank you so much for being in the contest. And here's your city pin, and Brianna has your prize and your certificate. So do we want to take a picture in front of these?
That's only appropriate.
Yeah, okay. Hopefully, that's what you roll with. All right. Beautiful. Excellent job. All right. Our second place winner was, is Mackenzie. Come on up, Mackenzie. And let's see. Is this one Mackenzie's or that one's Mackenzie's?
This is.
This one's. Anyway, this is pretty awesome, and it looks like you put a lot of time and effort into this. And the thing that intrigued me about this was the colors. It's very colorful. It is very balanced, and in terms of your composition, I just thought it looked great. So anyway, what would you like to say about your artwork here?
Um.
So turn around so everybody can see you.
I put, one of the ideas I put was improving healthcare because I know, and I thought we could improve healthcare by making healthcare more available around the areas where it's not really available for people and making it somewhat more affordable.
Awesome. So we'll look forward to you running for mayor in the future, right? And here's your pin and your certificate. So let's get our certificate, and we'll get our picture here. Want to do it on either side of this? Okay. And congratulations. All right. And now, for the moment we've all been waiting for, our first prize winner. So Brittany, come on up. We'll get this over here so it'll be more in the center here. I just had to be careful so I don't trip over my own foot here. All right. So Brittany, what was the inspiration for your poster? Like, you put a lot of work into this. The printing is amazing. I'm really big on handwriting. You can ask any of the people here in the room that know me. I'm a big handwriting person, and I appreciate good printing. So what inspired you?
What inspired me was probably my friends and everyone who like helped me, and everyone who was like really happy whenever I won. And they were like, whoa.
So when you were mayor.
Oh, I, one of the favorite things I put was probably for committees. I really like committees. It looks so fun. And then I put like recycling, trash, not like that.
Addressing homelessness, kindness. She says kindness is vital, even more important to me, and if I was mayor, I believe a town needs a kind and welcoming community. And if I were mayor, I would make everyone, make sure everyone was kind to each other. That's because everyone deserves to be treated fairly with respect. There you go.
Thank you.
And your prize and your certificate. All right, so we do, on the other side.
One, two, three.
All right, awesome. So I am looking forward to the Oregon Mayors Conference in July, where Oregon City will be a winner. How about that? Thank you to the parents and the schools that participated in this. We really appreciate it. Your students all worked hard, and we'll look forward to having even more folks participate in this next year. So thank you. And do you mind if we keep them for a little bit longer? Did we all, did we get all the photographs of them and everything that we wanted? Okay. So do we want to get them now? Okay. And thank you, Commissioner Marl, for opening with this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Anytime when I am not the youngest person in the room, I am equally as the room.
It gets harder. It used to be all of us at one time.
All right. So we're going to move on to 5B, 2023 Historic Review Board Accomplishments. Sabrina Ferry and Christina Robertson Gardner. Great work this past year. How's your garage demo going?
It's down.
I know. I could see the dance going on when I came down Seventh Street, and everybody was like, yay!
Hello. So we've done some great work this year in the HRB, everything from awarding preservation grants to adopting our new guidelines for middle housing. We've mailed out quarterly packets to new homeowners. We've approved alterations to historic homes and new construction projects. And we've adopted our 2023-2025 biennial work plan, which is very exciting. And we also got a chance to hold, host a camp, sort of a full day historic preservation training locally, and that was through the National Association of Preservation Commissions, and that happened in August. Oh, and we have, I'm probably just, we have a new board member, Gordon Lawrence, which we're really excited to have.
So we have a full house now?
We have a full house, yes.
We've got to get some more women, though.
Yes, yes, we do.
Got to work on that. Staff, just wanted a question for you. So on number three, I appreciate the fact that the, we've been mailing out those welcome packets. So what reminders are we going to give to the rest of the folks that own historic property? Do we have?
Sure, we.
Our CLG grant?
We do. We will continue to always send out a kind of welcome wagon packet when we get new tax assessor information quarterly. But as part of our new certified local government grant, which we receive every two years, we put aside some money for a mailing to every historic property owner. So that's about 500 and change, about 530, I think, historic properties. So we'll be sending out a large package this next year, kind of, which I think we hope to do on a not yearly basis, but every couple of years.
Every other year, yeah.
To send out a packet for every homeowner, and then continue with the quarterly updates for any new homeowners.
Awesome. Any questions? Hey, thanks for the great work, and keep up all the fantastic work. We're having more and more people recognize and understand all the wonderful things that owning historic property can bring.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item 5C. So we have a 2024 Legislative Session recap by our very own Representative Vanessa Hartman, District 40. Thank you so much for joining us, and we're sorry about the confusion of the location. This is technically not City Hall, but this is where we meet.
You don't have to put me on blast.
It's also about the commission chambers.
Yeah. We could be a little more clear that commission chambers are at 1, 2, 3, 4. We could be a little more clear that commission chambers are at 1, 2, 3, 4, so...
Now...
Anyway, just take your time.
I have a presentation. Thank you all for giving me some time. How much time do I have, or do you want me to stay within?
How much time would you like?
This is, this is your space. I'm here for you all. Ten minutes-ish?
Yeah, you're good.
Is that good? Okay, I know you have, you've been here for a while. And this is the, the third time I'm presenting this, so there's an information overload in this slide, so I won't read. And I'm realizing this, I'm like, I just want to be over communicative. So I, we'll just do some highlights to stick within that timeframe, because the last time I did this for Gladstone, they had to listen to me talk for almost 30 minutes, and I won't do that to you.
Well, your PowerPoint is very thorough.
Appreciate that. All right. And someone else is in control, I would imagine. Oh, oh, yes, that's fun. Well, here, you could be the clicker. So while that's loading, I promise there's no bugs in my slides. As you all know, I, you know, have the privilege and honor of representing House District 40, which includes Oregon City and Gladstone and parts of northern Clackamas County. I live in Gladstone and was a previous Gladstone City Councilor before becoming a state representative. You can go to the next slide. Oh, okay, perfect. So just a, this is just a brief overview of what we're going to go over today. This picture there is our team. We have Camila with us here today. She is our legislative aide that handles most of the constituents' casework and services around that. So if you ever have anyone that needs anything, Camila will be your first point of contact in working on those case manage, management tools. Daniel is my chief of staff. He's unfortunately unable to be with us today because he is being a good partner because it's his two-year anniversary with his partner. So congra, happy anniversary to him. Don't know if he wants me to share that, but I just did. Um, go to the next slide.
That's good.
Is it working? Okay. So really what the short session was about for us was really going over the fentanyl crisis, really doing reform of Measure 110, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. The governor's housing production package, reducing the cost of living. If you are unaware, each member in the short session gets two bills. There were 291 in total, with 115 sent to the governor's desks for signature. And of those 115, I'm proud to say 108 were substantially bipartisan. And for us, what that means is that it had five-plus Republican votes in both chambers, making 94% of the bills we passed this short 32 days that we were in were substantially bipartisan. I'll just give a brief update on the committees that I have served on over the past year and a half. I am a member of the Information Management and Technology Committee, which I like to joke, I think they put me there just because I'm a millennial and all I know is technology. But we do a lot of AI work. We passed and moved an AI task force there. Early Childhood and Human Services, Housing and Homelessness Committee, both of those, I will go into more detail later. I also had the privilege, as some of you may know, of serving on the Subcommittee of Transportation Planning, which was really about the tolling discussion. And last, I am the vice chair of the House Ag, Water, Land Use, and Natural Resources Committee, where we've done a lot of work around water equity and funding Agriculture Heritage Fund, as well as looking into some PFAS studies. So, next slide. I'll just jump right into the big topic of the session of the year, really. This is not a committee that I particularly served on, but it is an area of focus that is extremely personal, personal to me. We spent hours and hours following the work of this committee, and I have to say, huge thanks to the Oregon City Police for taking me on a ride-along and really educating what they are seeing in this city and around the area in Clackamas County and the great, great work that they are doing to address this crisis. It was extremely eye-opening for me to, to see, just in a four-hour shift that I got to ride along, that it's so prevalent in these areas and places that I take my kids and places that we go running at. So the one huge piece from that, or takeaway from that ride-along was the access or lack of treatment for our elder population. We went to a call at an assisted living center where someone was having some substance abuse. You can go to the next slide.
Who did you get to ride along with?
I got to ride along with Officer Pol.
Ah, okay.
And so with that, that is something that, moving forward down the road, it's not something that we invested a lot of dollars in this session, but is, is something that is growing to the top as needing to be studied, as, like, elder substance abuse. Really surrounding this reform was treatment first, second, third, with jail as the very last resort. And I'm very happy and excited to partner and see the great work that Oregon City has been doing, as well as Clackamas County and the buy-in and the support that they're going to be uplifting a deflection program. Some of the changes or top changes that we were involved in were enhancing penalties, selling outside of treatment centers, shelters, and/or in parks. The recovery housing and the medication-assisted treatment, which is spending access to treatment in jail, was a huge priority of mine to be involved with. I, like so many people, have lost someone to fentanyl overdose that was in, in the jail system and did not have any support. And so as we continue to watch this new reform go down, we are very much involved in the implementation and making sure that the partners that we have in the county and here and everywhere else have the support they need from, from the, excuse me, from the state. Next slide. The other big topic was, of course, the governor's housing package, the UGB expansion, as well as the infrastructure revolving loan fund. We were able to get it seeded with $75 million, and I will not go line by line, but those are some of the highlights that we saw in terms of the allocating dollars towards homeless shelter supports, towards rental assistance, and other direct allocations for infrastructure needs. We do have a really wonderful one-pager that kind of goes over the details of this package. If you all are interested in it, I'm happy to send all the information that you will need after this presentation.
That'd be great.
Next slide. And other, the other highlights that we were involved in were really around the reducing the cost of living. A couple of the highlights were really for me as a mom, making sure that employment-related daycare is fully funded. We were able to secure $171 million. I would have loved to, it had been 250, but we'll take what we can get. And then the, the last one was Senate Bill 1595, which really improved the outdated and flawed consumer protection and debt statutes. And really, that is fighting unfair collections and increased the amount of wages that were protected from garnishment. And I believe that bill has been attempted to be passed for about four different sessions, and so we were able to somehow secure that in the 32 days that we were in the short session. Next slide. So we do a lot of work, I do a lot of work in the domestic violence realm. This particular, my priority bill for the session, I had two priority bills. This one is the one that made it through, and we were calling it our Victims' Rights Package. And they did two things. So the first thing that it did was, if you're familiar with what revenge porn is, it's simply when you are in a relationship and you send intimate photos to one another, then you break up, and then someone would share those photos with the intent to harass or humiliate or intimidate. The state has done a lot of work to addressing that. There was just one word in the statute that was causing a little bit of a blockage for people to access justice, which was the word identifiable. So anyone, any layperson had to identify the image, even if the perpetrator admitted that that was the person. So it simply removes that, that word. You still have to go through all the processes, you still have to, you know, go through the, go through the process of the court. The second thing that it did was expanding restraining order filing options. So previous to this bill, you were only able to file a restraining order anywhere you or the abuser lives, not where it occurred. So in the case of the tri-county area here, if you, there's people live in Clackamas County, your abuser lives in Washington County, but you both work in Multnomah County, you would be unable to file in Multnomah County. So this expands that option for any kind of restraining order to be able to apply where that abuse occurred. The bill ended up having 49 sponsors by Cameron bipartisan and passed out of both House and Senate unanimously, which is always fun to watch, all green names on the board. The other bill, thank you, the second I just want to highlight, the other priority bill I had was the pill press bill that unfortunately did not make it into the Measure 110 reform, really would be to ban pill presses for personal use. So we plan to be bringing that back in the long session, should I be able to come back, and hopefully get that across the board and match our partners to the north. Both Washington and British Columbia have banned pill presses for personal use. And so to the fun part, we ended up securing $55 million for various projects throughout Clackamas County, but several of them here in Oregon City. The two huge priority ones for me, the top two, were the $2 million for the construction of the Oregon City Resource Center that would go through the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County, and then a $4 million allocation to construct a crisis stabilization center, location, to my knowledge, to be announced. There's several others that you can see listed there. The big one, I'm sure, our Clackamas County Commissioners were looking out for, is that $15 million for the Clackamas County Courthouse that we were able to fill that gap funding there. And lastly, the $20.7 million for Clackamas County Law Enforcement to set up that deferment deflection program. There are several other individual celebrations that are not listed up here that went to Clackamas County Children's Commission, so for childcare facilities. And then also, $260,000 went to what's called the Iron Tribe Network for subsidy peer, operational cost subsidy. So they were a peer-to-peer services organization. So we're very proud of, we actually made, came out with more money in the short session than we did in the long session, which I'm told is not usual. So we're very excited to see, to see that number. Next slide. These are just some more, again, general funding that we were involved in, allocating money to the crime victims, funding for children advocacy centers and survivor housing fund grants programs, and then the $400,000 for the Attorney General's Sexual Assault Task Force, as well as some various other dollar amounts for summer learning programs and Agriculture Heritage Fund. So I won't read those until... Uh, next slide. Oh, the big one, right? We're gonna, we're gonna be excited for right now, but we're not gonna stop working. We finally, after eight months of this Subcommittee on Transportation Planning, you all might remember, we had in-district hearing in Gladstone at the high school. After we did those four in-district meetings, we had a couple of other subcommittees. And I, I'll be honest, I was very nervous that even throughout the tour that we did that our, my counterparts were just gonna keep moving forward. That was how we were always feeling. But I found out with everybody else in the state that the governor stopped tolling on my drive to a meeting, and while it is still something I think we need to absolutely be paying attention to, in 2025 is really where that transportation package discussion is beginning and has been discussed since the end of the short session, how we are going to meaningfully fund our transportation system. So while tolling is absolutely stamped for reasonable ability pricing, there still hasn't been an answer received about the tolling on the Abernathy Bridge, just to pay for that particular bridge. So that is something we're continuing to meet with the chairs or the co-chairs and continue to advocate that you all in this room and several other people in this area are involved in a meaningful way. But I do have to say, thank everybody who was involved in these discussions, people answering my text messages about your feelings. We had such a great coalition in our Clackamas Caucus within the, within the building and within the leaders here, that we finally got our voices listened to for now. So, but more to come on this package and how that 2025 is gonna look.
Do you have anything to add about the proposed hearing schedule that is, the Transportation Board is gonna go around the state, and I've noticed on the list that Clackamas County was completely excluded? So I hope that that gets rectified.
I will keep my comment off the record.
Yes, that's okay, that's fine. We're just, you know, we're just saying publicly that, that Clackamas County needs to be included in that roadshow.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Clackamas County will absolutely be included in that roadshow if it's the last thing that I do here.
If nothing else, we'll just show up at everybody else's and make a scene.
Oh, you know, and they know that we can do that, and we can, we can organize. No, I, I was, for lack of a better words, very disappointed to see that, and calls were made.
Good, yeah, I knew you had.
Just, just a little highlight of future initiatives for my office that we plan to look into and see if they merit worth in the potential long session. The housing package is really around disseminating water quality. Right now, the reports, there's no statute in place that you send your water report to the actual address, you send it to the landlord. So we've heard a lot of stories about people who are renting finding out their water has been, is not drinkable, it's not safe drinking water, and they did not know because the reports went to the landlord and not to the resident. So a simple fix there. There would be some discussions around hold deposit guardrails. It's become the loophole since we have really strong deposit. They've called a new thing called a hold deposit. And in tandem with that, it is not required in the state of Oregon that your unit be habitable before you move in. And so you have to move in and then report any sort of mold or any infrastructure, and then they would fix it. So we're really just trying to look into how we can meet each other in the middle, landlords and tenants as well. We want to make sure we come up with something that works for everybody and doesn't, doesn't require any additional work for, for some of our agencies. There's also several youth, as we loved that mayor program today, that was awesome. But we have heard from many of our homeless youth, emancipated youth, that there has been heightened discrimination against them when they're trying to apply for apartments or trying to apply for housing loans. And so we're gonna be forming a work group around that with some of our partners like Ecumenical Ministries and some other folks that really work with homeless youth in the area. The big one that we are beginning is this grants agency. So the top-left corner is really laying the groundwork for a potential new state agency, which I know is a heavy lift, but are really looking at a holistic approach to how we handle our grants as a state. As I'm sure we all can attest to, legislators will come up with a grant system, or we will have some, we will direct an agency to come up with a grants program, and they are unaware of how to handle that. And then it takes a year or two to get that money onto the ground. And so really looking at a pilot program around an agency to come up with that, like, individual separate part. So that grants agency would only handle the grants and be able to be a liaison between, so let's say the Department of Agriculture. So we are beginning that, those discussions. We're really excited to see where that takes us. I know it has been attempted once before, so we will, we will see where that goes, and we'll keep you all, keep you all informed.
All right.
And that's it.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Three of the members up here sit on the South Fork Water Board, which is the primary provider of water to this community. How do we, and how does the city of Oregon City become aware of funding opportunities? As we know, we're gonna face infrastructure exposures that we need to correct to guarantee ongoing supply of water. How do we get notice that these dollars are available, and how do we apply for them?
Yeah, great, great question. Thank you so much. Really picking up the phone and giving me a call. A lot of these initiatives that came towards, across my plate, either from city manager, from both cities, or some of the unincorporated parts, were from either lobbyist or just they were, they called the office and say, hey, we really like the Oak Lodge Water Services District. We really need this money, $3 million for tertiary funding. What can you do? And then I go and advocate on your behalf in the building when we do capital construction projects. And so I'm absolutely, maybe we can schedule a time for me to come and, and meet you all and, and sort of listen in to your meetings, and then we can form that relationship and be able to support that, those efforts more often.
I think that would be a wonderful idea. You can meet jointly with our city and our, our South Fork Water providers and, and see what our exposures are and our search for funds. I appreciate that.
We'll get that set up.
Yeah, we will get that set up, because it's, it's of critical interest.
Absolutely. I will just add, there's two, two bills that came through the House, well, one came through the House Committee on Homelessness and Housing, and then the other came through the House Ag Committee and Water Committee, which was a new way of identifying projects like that, because as I have learned as a new legislator, lots of times, bills go to ways and means, and they die. And so this bill, this package that we explored, identified projects, like individual projects in every community, and we passed that through a policy committee, identifying that these are the projects that we know are gonna have a direct impact. And to my knowledge, it's something new and unorthodox in the, in the past, and those packages made their way through. So I think this is an opportunity if we have individual projects in the, in the district or the area where I can advocate for them individually.
You are welcome to even have a preliminary sidebar conversation with any of these three members of that board and know the importance of it.
All right.
The only other comment I make is we, we're glad that tolling is in its present state, but we're not sure it won't rise its ugly head again. And I think you'll join us in that sentiment.
I absolutely join you in that sentiment. I absolutely join you in that sentiment. Unfortunately, ODOT has become a four-letter word in my household and it'll take a long time for me to gain trust back in the system, even as we have seen what they have done this week about not including Clackamas County, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Mike, anything?
Adam?
Sure.
Go right ahead.
Well, thank you for being here, Representative Hartman. This is some, having our legislators come and give an update is something that I've been pushing to have on our agendas for a while now, and so I'm glad that we've been able to make it happen. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the city manager and thank you to you and your staff for getting this set up. So not necessarily questions, just some thoughts that I, I first want to echo on the tolling front. You know this very well, but for people watching, I just think again, taking this great news with a grain of salt and remembering that the work is not over. And that's what my concern was when the governor's initial pause was put in place was that it would give the false hope that our work is done. And I, I just, I know that Representative Hartman knows this and that Senator Meek knows this. I just wanna make sure that the public knows that we, we still need to be pushing really hard on that. And we know that you've done a great job at that already. So first of all, I, I appreciate that. And then second, on the infrastructure and the allocations coming back to district, I just wanted to note some concerns in our community about the, the Resource Center, which I'm sure you're, you're well aware of. This is something that we all recognize is something that we need. For us, it's more of a matter of trying to make sure that we have the right stakeholder input and the right location for these services. And that's been a concern, I think, of all five of us up here. It was disconcerting earlier in the process to hear from Counselor Christine Lewis from Metro, who had to give me a call and say, did you know that Clackamas County is moving forward with an allocation from their SHS funding? And I told her, no, the city had not been informed. And so that was the first that we'd ever heard that they were seeking those funding. And not being communicated to by the county was frustrating, to say the least, on an issue that is very central to our community. Not to mention that this building will be on our main street. And, and I want to be very careful with the way I phrase this because again, I recognize that this is a huge need in our community and it's something that we need to have. It's just a matter of making sure that the process we go through is correct. And so I, I recognize that this is a huge win, but I also wanna keep pushing for the infrastructure money that we also need, not just for the homeless, but also to, to the infrastructure to serve new development, which is hindering a lot of that and keeping things unaffordable for so many of us. So thank you for your continued work. And it's, it's a pleasure working with you, not only as an elected, but as someone that I get to see in my professional capacity as well. So I, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Adam, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Mayor McGriff?
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry, Adam, just Commissioner Morrow reminded me of something. And again, this isn't anything you don't already know and it, and it is a need, but the $720,000 for free on the outside to purchase a reentry home in Clackamas County, citing of those facilities, as, as you know, is, is a tender spot for all of us up here and for our community. And as Commissioner Morrow mentioned, we were surprised by the, the funding for the Resource Center. And I know none of us wanna be surprised again about where that particular facility might end up. Thank you.
So I just wanna close by thanking you for your leadership on all things Clackamas County and particularly in accepting our list of infrastructure needs. And I concur with Commissioner O'Donnell that South Fork has been a little bit behind the eight ball and not exploring some of these things, but we plan to remedy that. And I know you're very aware of the situation that City of West Lynn has with their main water line under, under the bridge and ODOT kind of thumbing their nose at them and saying, too bad, so sad, you're gonna pay for it. But one of the things that I want you to know sincerely is that your local government experience has made a significant amount of difference in the legislature. I expressed this concern to the governor. I said, many of your advisors and many of the legislators that have been serving the last two years in Salem do not have local government experience. They do not understand what are the burdens and constraints we have as local governments. And so every time a new rule comes down, we're like, you know, enough already. I said, there's only so much we can handle. And we have been involved in some situations where, you know, I have said much to our staff, so grim, that no, we're not gonna do that. We don't, we don't have the time, we don't have the staff and we don't have the money. So your local government experience has made a great deal of difference in this legislature and the fact that a lot of them had the guts to say to the state, wait a minute, we didn't do any, we weren't here in 2017 to approve this tolling thing. What are you doing and how come we don't have the answers to these questions? And many of you, with your leadership, with Courtney Neron's leadership, with Mark Meek's leadership, with Senator Aaron Woods's leadership, asked those hard questions and they didn't wanna answer those questions. But you guys pushed it and pushed it and pushed it and we shouldn't have had to do that. But I just want you to know how much we appreciate the fact that you understand what the burdens are of local governments. We also have many opportunities, but it seems like we get the short end of the stick many times as the 241 cities in this state with new rule after new rule after new rule. And no rules being taken away, you know, just keep piling on. So thank you again for your leadership and your support. It means everything to our constituents in our community. So thank you. We appreciate it.
And you're welcome.
And we actually have had Senator Mark here, but we need to get him back. So he's been here, but thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I hope that our members of our public were able to take advantage of that and see this overview because this is really important to all of us. It's, you know, Salem is just, you know, not a great mystery. So we have item number six, adoption of the agenda. We have a consent agenda. We have a citizen who wants to make a comment about something on that agenda. I'm not inclined to pull it at this moment, but if you wanna come up and say what you need to say. Normally, we just pass this because we've looked at it all, but well, thank you for I think you spoke on this previously. Yeah, don't take that.
Commissioner, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. And I apologize, I'm not quite at my sparkling self. I just got a needle stuck in my eye and, but you know how passionate I am about this community and I, I just wanna get some thoughts out here.
Could you speak up just a little bit, William?
Specifically, the issue is the 7D on the consent agenda regarding the, the DEI contract. As a citizen, I was, I was shocked to see the, the price tag on that. $150,000 is, I mean, in the city budget, it's not that big of a deal, but I think that most people would say that that's a lot of money. Secondly, is that as a member of the Budget Committee, I felt a little bit blindsided because I don't recall discussing this during the budget processing. As the, as a, as a goal, yes, it was discussed. But insofar as the method of, of, of dealing with that goal, I don't know that that was discussed. I, as an aside, I disagree that that should be a goal at all. I think that is a much larger issue. I think that that is, that should float above the rules. I think it should be part of the vision, should have been part of the mission statement. But as a goal, to me, as a business person, I find goals should be attainable, they should be, you should know when you're finished, when you have accomplished the goal. And the, the concept of DEI is something that will never be finished. It should be an ongoing part of our life, not something that is tackled as a little task or even as a large task. I think that it's, it's something that should permeate all of us. I think insofar as DEI, diversity, equity and inclusion, I think that, I'm reminded by, of Commissioner Smith's comment recently, well, in the last couple of years, that he felt that we had the most diverse commission in Oregon City history. And I heartily agree. I heartily agree. We did that without a consultant telling us how to do it. We did it without having a committee to promote it. We did that because that's the right thing to do and I think that that's the way we should be living our lives. Insofar as diversity, equity, I have not heard, and I'm always expected to be corrected, of, of a large outflowing of complaints about how inequitable this city operates because I think that we are equitable and I think that we are doing a very good job of it. Insofar as inclusion, I salute Commissioner Morrow for being the driving wheel behind getting our youth, Youth Advisory Committee, the way, the fact that we have, we're working harder and harder on the CIC to include all the neighbors. I don't see a, I don't see an issue regarding inclusion.
Thank you.
I would ask if you could pull that to at least talk about it and get more public input because I don't recall that there was a lot of public input on this decision.
Well, I respect your opinion, but we did discuss it quite a bit at Budget Committee and there was a specific line item for this particular project that we were gonna be moving forward to year two. I spoke about it myself several times at the meeting and I think Commissioner Morrow would agree with me as well as the other commissioners. We did not blindside anybody. This was clearly part of our budget discussion and clearly part of the allocations that we've had when we were approving the budget. My correct city manager, Conklin?
Well, he's not gonna better say yes. Yeah, you can have a seat.
In our financial document or that, that was adopted, you know, we lay out the goals under Goal One, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, General Fund, Human Resources, $150,000. I guess I don't remember the specific conversation during the Budget Committee meetings, but I know that this was a goal identified at our retreat early on. I'm just trying to, I don't remember exactly where the budget numbers were, were put in, but it, it seemed like the goals were identified pretty early on with funding associated with.
I went back to my budget, which I still have, the copies, and I went back and I, I knew it was in there. I, I was very demonstrative in my discussion about this staying in there and that how regardless of whether we have many enlightened people in our community, there's a lot of people that are not. You, you may have a seat, so we're not gonna have any more comment about that from the audience. But we talked about it a lot. We talked about it at our goal-setting session. The city is committed to moving forward. We have a very different environment than we did when I first moved here 30 years ago. We have a more diverse population and there are many people that still do not feel comfortable. They are not members of the dominant community like you are. And I think it's really important that we start making a difference in our community so everybody feels welcome. Not everybody feels the way you do or I do. They're, they're not there yet. And we're not gonna change all, everybody's hearts and minds, but we're gonna make an attempt to address some of the concerns and some of the things that I heard from our, our committee that we had about things that they've encountered here in Oregon City. Frankly, some of them surprised me because I myself have not experienced it, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So I, I appreciate your comment, but we did not blindside anybody at the budget meetings. It was, it was in there.
I'd say we'd also say on, under the Human Resources Department, as part of the budget presentation or budget highlights, specifically talks about DEI as well as DI initiatives being funded $150,000. So I think it's been pretty consistent throughout. I know there was some discussion.
Yes.
But I don't think it's changed, honestly, from what we proposed.
No. And Commissioner Morrow?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say that I recall that specific budget amount from the Budget Committee hearing because like William, I had some serious concerns about that high of a sticker price. And so that's why every step along the way that we've discussed this, I've continued to express my support for this project and for moving forward with it, but also recognizing that hopefully as future biennia go on, that we find a more cost-effective way to do this that's more holistically incorporated into the everyday functions of our city and where we don't have to be outsourcing it to a consultant. Because even tonight, I still have heartburn over this price tag. And so William, your point is well taken, but I do recall that this was presented because I had that heartburn back then, too.
Michael?
Well, I think maybe we should pull this item. Because we're going pretty far down the road.
Well, I, I was gonna close the, and close his comment down and just basically, I'm just trying to respond to the fact that he said, we did not discuss it during the budget and we did.
We did.
And we did.
We did, and I recall that, too.
Yeah, so.
I.
Anyway.
I do have a concern that I want to express.
Okay.
And I understand, I remember the budget discussion and I know we talked about $150,000. And I did a little research and I have, I have no concern whatsoever of, about Dr. Brown's experience and capability to do this kind of work. But what I don't know for our $150,000 is, does he have a team of individuals? And if so, how many? And how many clients does he have that he's working with presently? Because I, I just have a concern, it's a lot of money. Are we going to get, and I, and I know it's not about, you know, it, it's not all about FaceTime or hours, but I mean, $150,000 is, is pretty close to a full-time salary for a year, you know, not with benefits and all of that. But, and, and are we going to get the output that we deserve for that amount of money?
Well.
That's, that's my concern. And I'm not, I don't mean to demean the importance of the project and I recognize we put $150,000 in the budget. That, those are my concerns.
Could I, could I recommend that we pull this from the consent? Deal with the consent and then we can have.
And then we can have Patrick come up.
More robust discussion with staff and however else you.
Sure, okay. I'll make a motion. I move to approve the consent agenda minus item 7D. Second. 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 Roll call.
Commissioner Morrow?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor McGriff?
No.
Vote passes?
May I have a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda?
I think we just, just did approve it.
No, that was to take seven, no, we didn't approve it. We took 7D off. That's what we.
The motion by Commissioner Morrow was.
We approved it without items.
Okay, well then change my vote to yes, because I'll approve the rest of the consent agenda. All right, let's move on to item eight. We don't have any public hearings. Oh, I forgot to ask now, did we send a copy of those January 17 minutes to the City of West Lynn? Since that was our joint meeting?
I don't believe so, no.
If, if you could do that, that would be appropriate so they get a copy of them as well since they were partially there.
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you. All right, so we don't, we have general business, no public hearings, so item nine A, first reading of ordinance number 24-1003, proposed amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code Sections 240-020, 240-030, Public Contracting and Purchasing. Ms. Rains?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, as you stated, this is a first reading. We did present this to you all at the last commission meeting and there were some requested changes. So you'll see double underlined in red that Section A now references the Section 2.40030, which is the city manager authority. Then we did adjust the language of city manager designated to city and then from award to selection. So those were the adjustments that were requested. Otherwise, it's the same as presented at the previous meeting.
All right, any questions? They made all the changes that we had recommended and suggested. So we should be good to go. Your motion to approve, first reading.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 24-1003.
Second. Bill, please.
Ordinance number 24-1003, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending municipal code chapter 2.40, Public Contract and Purchasing, subsections 2.40020 and 2.40030.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Adam Morrow?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes?
All right, item 9B. Who's leading off that one?
I don't mind.
I'll go ahead and give it a start.
It's a three dog night.
I don't mind.
Never mind.
Unless somebody else wants to go first. So we're following up on the discussion about the relocation or location of the RV Park, currently located in Clackamas Park. So as you're well aware, we've had a, a, a couple of work sessions to discuss the Clackamas Park master planning process. Through that public engagement process, a location across the street was. Through that public engagement process, a location across the street was identified as a potential location to move the RV Park, which would raise it in elevation while still maintaining that facility. During the work session, there was a discussion about looking at an alternative location, which would be on the east side of 99E on an urban renewal-owned piece of property. We refer to it as Lot 1 of that plat. It's right across from Firestone Alley. And Kendall and his team looked at that property as well, had some layouts, some cost estimates. But really, you know, this is, I think, a discussion, hopefully for the commission, more about, you know, the policy of this RV Park. Where do we think it would best be situated or located? And so, you guys have had the conversation. We're here to answer any questions, provide any assistance we can moving forward.
I think we should start out with a correction of a number of misstatements that were made at the work session because it was a pretty lively work session with a lot of misinformation. I'm going to make a number of statements, and people can take issue with them, but I think that the discussion needs to be framed within these, which I view as corrected pieces of information. So the lot adjoining McDonald's is not part of the park, and it is, we believe, is currently city-owned. That's one. Two is Cove Lot 1, which we refer to as across from Firestone Alley. It's actually owned by Urban Renewal, and it could be transferred. The ownership could be transferred even if it was the sum of $1. So it's not, that's not a financial obstacle to its use. And I'm not advocating, I'm just making corrections to the record. Three, the current RV location, as demonstrated by dollars put forward by our previous finance manager, is profitable, and it's profitable even during flood years. When you say about allocation of maintenance, we can't speak to the allocation of maintenance to that, and I suspect the maintenance is minimal because what we've got there is nothing more than a gravel lot with no trees, no picnic tables, no benches, and we've shown dollars that say it is profitable. I don't know, and this is a key part of the discussion, is how we move forward. Is a boat ramp actually required by the Oregon State Marine Board, or is there a financial liability if we don't do it? And I think that's a key part of the discussion, and you talked about potential areas where you can relocate your RV Park, if at all. And finally, as Commissioner Smith has pointed out to me, currently, we don't have the financial ability to advance this plan at all, or to advance the master plan or build the park. So I think, and nobody disagrees with those statements, I think they're the framework for the discussion. I'll leave it at that.
Was the RV addressed?
Sure, yeah, if you have definitive answers to those, that would be great.
So the conversation around the RV Park, obviously, you've admitted some information by a former finance director related to revenues associated with the RV Park. Unfortunately, the finance director didn't present the entire story. There are costs associated with managing the RV Park. And one of the reasons we were having this conversation related to the relocation of the RV Park is dealing with those issues associated with maintenance, associated with flooding, and having to shut down the RV Park. It affects its sustainability and its financial viability. Most RV Parks don't make money. It's just a fact. We're not the size to where we're going to be generating large sums of money. The larger RV Parks that have 80 to 100 RV stations that people can rent, those are the ones that are going to be generating a lot of revenue and that can offset their costs. Unfortunately, that's not us. We strive to break even, and we believe that removing the RV Park from that, from the flood plain allows us to reduce our costs, become more sustainable, and to move towards breaking even. So those are my thoughts related to the RV Park. You're right, we do make revenue, but in regards to looking at our expenses and subtracting our expenses, our finance director, when we started having this conversation about two years ago, when we started this, sent out information to the city commissioners, speaking to the profitability of the RV Park. And we're currently looking at the revising those numbers based on some of the changes that we've currently made with the new master fee schedule, but we're just not seeing a large profit associated with the RV Park, unfortunately.
So let me pose a question to you. Do you assign specific cost of maintenance, specific to the RV Park alone? You do?
Yes.
And do you do that to any other component of the city? To this building, or any of the other historic buildings that we own, or any other city? Do they have specific accounts that capture maintenance costs associated to them?
There are specific costs associated with utilities and personnel associated with certain parks, certain, certain parks, maintenance specialists are assigned specific routes, and Clackaman Park is one of those parks. So there are FTEs associated with managing the park, there are expenses related to the utilities related to the park, there are expenses related to removing utilities when it floods, and getting the park reopened. Those are all costs that we have to absorb and that affect the ability of an RV Park being financially, or generating a profit.
So you're telling me that you differentiate costs between the RV Park as one cost center and the rest of Clackaman Park as a separate cost center?
Yes, and on top of that, what we do is, we have a work order system called Maintain X, where we actually track when our staff goes to specific sites, when they're doing work on specific things related to our parks. We do the same thing for our sports fields. So, because what we want to do is to have an accurate account of what our overhead is. So when we bring that information to you, you have a better understanding of what our costs are.
I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I sure would like to see those numbers citywide.
Sure.
Okay. Is there another, other statements made that you want to take issue with?
The funding associated with the Clackaman Park Master Plan, one of the goals with getting this master plan approved was to utilize this approved master plan as a way to go out and get grants so we can start implementing the development of that park. So we don't have the full funding for the park right now, but we have already identified funds that we have access to, that we're planning on leveraging with other grants to start the development of the park, and that's our goal.
So have we accumulated any funds to date in an escrow account or such?
We are going to be leveraging the West Good Neighbor Agreement funds that we currently have. We have about $628,000, and we're planning on getting another $200,000. And what we're going to do, or our plan is to leverage that money along with other grant funding in order to start the process of implementing some of the phasing of this park moving forward.
Anything further?
Any other questions that you had that I didn't answer?
No, as far as you, I reeled all five issues. I didn't know if you were going to answer all five.
We were aware that the tax lots that we're referencing, that we wanted to relocate the RV Park to, were owned by the city. We were also aware that there were some D restrictions associated with that property that stated it had to be used as a park or a sanitation treatment center. So we were aware of all of that. Obviously, over the years, that, those particular tax lots have been utilized for overflow parking for the park. So we felt like it would be a good option to relocate the RV Park to those particular areas. It still allows it to be connected to the park and removes the RV Park out of the flood plain. So that's the reason for that.
Yeah, my, the only reason I asked was because when members of PrAC sat with us after, they, they were operating on erroneous information. When Joyce sat up there, she was unaware that the city owned the lot, the Firestone Lot. You know, it was represented to PrAC that they'd have to purchase that.
Firestone Lot?
Well, I call it that, Lot 1.
Lot 1, okay.
It's proximate to Firestone Alley.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I think, I don't care how this decision goes tonight, if it goes at all. I just want it made on the basis of accurate information.
And what we were trying to communicate in regards to the pros and cons is the cost difference in order to develop. You can remove the amount it would cost to acquire the piece of property, but I think we have to admit that the Cove has some issues associated with it. It's also a bigger piece of property. There's a lot of mitigation that would need to happen as opposed to the two tax lots. So there would be a cost difference in regards to trying to develop the Cove as an option as opposed to the two tax lots.
Understood.
Those were the only things that we were trying to represent.
I don't know if that was clearly communicated to PrAC or like here at this point. Rocky says it was not. There's a key issue to be put forth here. Are we, do we face a liability if the boat ramp is not replaced? Is Oregon State Marine Board going to pursue us for dollars?
They do have the option to pursue us for repayment of grant funding that was provided. And they do have the opportunity, according to our agreement, to reclaim the boat ramp, and we would have to relinquish our rights to the boat ramp. And that's just part of our agreement with, with the Oregon State Marine Board.
See, to me, that's part of this, a major part of this decision-making process because at one point, I believe Commissioner Mitchell proposed the parking area for the boat ramp as a potential site for RV parking, and it's actually a good one because there's power there, there's access to sewers there, it's got a lot of benefits. But to know or not to know if we stand to be liable for a boat ramp or no boat ramp is a critical part of the decision-making process.
Well, one of our goals when we started this process, we knew the importance of public engagement. We wanted to hear from our community because they're the ones we serve here, and we wanted to know what the community actually wanted and wanted to see in the park. So we've had a large, robust public engagement process, 19 stakeholder meetings, we did three open houses, we did two work sessions with the city commission, with PrAC, we did two additional meetings with city commission, we did nine, we did over, we had over 900 people participate in the online survey. So we feel like the plan that we represent, whether we have presented, reflects what the community wants. So the community said that they want a boat ramp, and that was a priority for them. They also stated that they wanted the RV Park. So what we did is just bringing the information forward to the city commissioners and say, "This reflects, based on the information that we accumulated over the past two years, these are what we're hearing from the community as to what they want."
So what was their response when they wanted a boat ramp? They think we're on the hook for, I thought it was a quarter million dollars if we don't put in a boat ramp. If we do put in a boat ramp, where do we put it, and what's the impact on the Clackaman Park plan?
We showed where the new location would be, 350 feet down from the original location. All of that was presented to the community. The community says they, they still want this boat ramp at this particular location.
Well, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, to put another boat ramp 350 feet downstream at the same orientation as new and is an exercise in futility and expect the same outcome. Regardless, you gave the information that we saw tonight. I don't want to be argumentative.
What I have learned from this process, and quite frankly, several citizens at the PrAC meeting implied that two of us have derailed this. This wouldn't have been gone past one meeting if it was two of us. This was something I thought was decided long ago, and I was okay with it. Me and Commissioner O'Donnell had argued it for months on a losing end, and then somehow, at the last minute, it came back, shockingly to all of us, because it wouldn't have anyway. So I appreciate that. What I, what I, what I struggle with, because I can, I can go forward tonight knowing that there shouldn't be any more conversation, and it's going to go forward three to two, and that if something doesn't happen with that park in the next five or 10 years, we may be at this conversation again. Because I've seen multiple plans of this park, and the park still looks the same as it did 20 years ago when we started talking about two different plans for the RV Park and multiple other plans. So it's not done until it's built. So without harping on that more, what I learned tonight, or what I've learned in the past week, and by the way, I will be honest in saying I made some huge assumptions in the last meeting that was pretty, it was my estimation, it was my guess of what happened at PrAC because I hadn't watched the PrAC meeting, but I went home and watched it that night, and exactly what I said happened at that meeting. I don't, I understand, and so, public process, this is all public process. The PrAC meeting is a public process, and that was completely derailed. The PrAC meeting, the answers given to PrAC were one-sided. PrAC actually asked important questions. In fact, asked questions that I think some of us had asked, things like, "Do we need a boat ramp?", things like that, and they were answered mostly well. But a lot of the answers, especially when it came to questions about, well, you know, the purchasing price, and there was nothing ever alluded to that there would not be an option, that the cost was given to PrAC saying it would be this much. Any one of us, given that information, would say this is a bad idea. PrAC needed to have a work session with us. The idea that we would have a PrAC meeting before a commission work session where the information at that PrAC meeting was given by staff and was answered in one way without facts, and then fed back to us while we're making a decision, which most of us sitting on the commission defer to our committees. But honestly, I don't watch committee meetings. I didn't know that the public speaking were all the same people sitting on the PrAC meeting that had produced a letter at a PrAC meeting and then produced the same letter to us. That bothers me. That process is wrong, it's slanted. Even the answers by our consultant about urban renewal properties and whatever leaning one way or another, which we hadn't even had a conversation, this would have to go to an urban renewal meeting to have those conversations. And to say that these things couldn't happen, or these things couldn't happen, or this is the process, it completely feeds a narrative that was all to the con list and nothing else. And, you know, thankfully, the chair of PrAC did not allow that letter to be read because I think he's sensible and understood reading some of that letter into the record was probably not the best use. Here's what we need to know. If we are going to have a work session where we're revisiting a advisory committee, that work session absolutely has to happen together. Because if any of us were sitting in that meeting and you were giving the answers to PrAC that you gave in that meeting, we would have said, "Hey, that's not right." And vice versa, the questions that PrAC was asking that we might have input to could have been discussed. That wasn't the case, and I know that if I was only given the information at that PrAC meeting, I would have said the same thing, "Yeah, you're right, this is a bad idea." But they didn't get the right information, they didn't get all the information. That is what bothers me. So I will just say, we'll vote tonight on this, but until that park is built, it can be revisited by any commission from now until the day it's built, and I will not let it go. Because I do really think this is a bad decision, and do think it was derailed, and I do think that this whole process is part of the public process. So we can't negate one piece of the public process and not say, if it wasn't a public process, this side of the commission wouldn't have been allowed to let us talk about it because it was that side that did, because if it was two of us, this would have been voted on a month ago. voted on a month ago.
Gentlemen, I would like to suggest that we move forward on whatever we're going to do with deliberation because we've just repeated everything that we talked about at the last meeting, and I appreciate the comments, I appreciate being able to hear them again. But I think that we have a master plan.
Make a motion?
Well.
I want to make a comment before we go to a motion.
Go ahead. And go ahead, after you.
I have, in my mind, set aside the Prac decision. I'll concede.
Which one?
Their vote, their six-to-one vote that they took is not a part of my thought process now. Three things I would say. First, this master plan came through a lengthy public process.
We've heard that.
I'm up.
I'll make a motion.
I'm speaking.
Hang on. Commissioner Mitchell's got the floor.
This came through an intensive public process, and I'm not willing to set that aside. The second point, I know this is not an Urban Renewal Commission meeting, we are all Urban Renewal Commissioners. We all know that we have damage control to do on urban renewal in Oregon City. And one of the things that we've gotten whacked over is investing urban renewal funding or urban renewal assets in projects that don't put property back on the tax rules. I don't know if this, if they would call it Lot One, Track One, whatever it is, will that get on the tax rule soon or at all? I don't know. But I do know, if we put an RV park there, we have closed the door on that ever getting back on the tax rule, and we have once again given urban renewal a black eye because we're not using it the way it is intended to be used, which is to put property back on the tax rule and which we have been criticized by our community for not doing in the past. And the third thing I would say, and I don't know if you, I believe we've all seen the draft version of the Parks Master Plan, not the Clackamet Park Master Plan, but the Parks Master Plan. One of the things that's in there is a ranking of a statistically valid survey conducted by our community members on what are important assets to have in our park system. RV park was third from the bottom. That, to me, is important information as well. So for me, it's a master plan is done and approved by this commission. It was a two-to-one vote, yes, but there's nothing in our code or our rules of operation that says that a two-to-one vote is not valid when that's the quorum at the time.
Sure.
We have an approved master plan. I have real concerns about using urban renewal property for the reasons that I've stated, and it's an asset that, in a statistically valid survey, our community rated as a low priority, and I'm ready to go forward.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first point that I was going to make was already just made by Commissioner Mitchell, which is the urban renewal issue. The loudest opponents of urban renewal in this community say time and time again that we're not using urban renewal as it's meant to be used, which is to generate revenue. And this would be heading in that direction, and so I have serious issues about that. I know there have been concerns about the public process. I know it was just said several times, we've had a public process, an extensive public process, and that there has been issues taken with that characterization. But what I would say first is that when the comments that were made about skewed information presented by the consultant, the first thing I think of is actually a comment that has been made to be by Commissioner O'Donnell with his experience in the private sector saying, the first thing that you have to do is get that contract and then get as many change orders as you can. And so what I would wager is that the financial incentive for our consultant is for us to continue arguing about this so that we continue keeping him on his contract. So I don't know necessarily that we would, that we have those perverse incentives that have been claimed, although those points about public process are well-taken, and I appreciate that. Speaking of public process, it is because of the fact that we have extended this, that the people who were originally involved and not given the option to answer different questions the way they would have liked, as Commissioner Smith has pointed out, which I think, again, is a valid point, is that because we have extended this process, they would have had that opportunity to come tonight, actually, and on several nights prior to that. And so I just wanted to point that out, and to a point that Commissioner O'Donnell has said about profitability, that's something that I think is important. And I appreciated getting the clarification from Mr. Reed tonight because I didn't know what the actual answer was. I know that there were the figures that were given by Mr. Parno in the past, but talking about gross versus net are very different things. And it reminds me of when we had those many conversations with ODOT, and they would say, well, tolling is going to bring in X amount of dollars, and we're going to be able to do everything we ever wanted to do on I-205, and then us having to make public records requests and clarify, that's gross revenue, but what happens after you take out your fifty, sixty percent overhead and what's left for us? And it paints a very different picture. And so I appreciated that clarification. So with that being said, I just want to close my comments by saying that I supported bringing this back to the commission several times as a courtesy to my colleagues, not because I wanted to hash this out longer. I think this has been a very dramatic turn of events, and I did not support going on with this longer because I wanted to extend that. I supported it because I recognized the concerns that when we approved it, it was, as Commissioner Mitchell said, it was two-to-one. It was the three of us, Commissioner Smith, then Commissioner McGriff, I believe, and then myself, who were voting on that. And I, again, I greatly understand the concern of having a decision as important as this going through on a two-to-one vote, and so I supported us having further conversations about it with the full commission, and I think we've done our job in doing so. Honestly, I think the only thing that I supported during that time period when there were only three of us active, the only other thing that I supported going forward on a two-to-one vote was the Youth Advisory Commission because I knew that it was going to move forward had we had an entire commission and we had a holdout. And so that point is well-taken. But again, I think we've had our public process originally. It had its flaws, as has been pointed out. That's why we went through it again, and I think we've done our job.
Let's have a motion.
I want to respond. Tonight is the first night I ever heard that we break down our cost allocations to the degree that have been defined, and I'm going to go meet with our finance people, and I want to see that. That's for me. For you, the two gentlemen on the end, I don't think you were partying to this commission during the Cove development project.
Nor during the hotel project that was sitting on the same property you want to build an RV park right now.
And nobody, no developer wanted to touch Lot One or across from the Firestone Lot for any reason to try to put any development that would yield a tax return or taxable revenue from it, none. We had it out there, and there was no interest. And if anybody disagrees, if the staff disagrees with that, please speak up.
Not only that, but we had a for-sale sign on the McDonald's Lot for urban renewal property to build a possible hotel that would link with parking for Clackamet Park and the lot, so.
I don't know how we would have been able to do that since the property is deed restricted, so.
You weren't on the commission at the time, so.
When, what year was?
I sat in the audience for the Cove development, and I, basically, it was, I sat through Planning Commission and some of the City Commission meetings. It was kind of.
Well, my point just being that even in just the last two or three years, a lot of standards have been relaxed by the state.
In what way?
In the ways of development.
Not for building on that lot. I mean, nobody wanted to put twenty-foot piers on there to build anything. I mean, it was of no interest to the developers whatsoever.
Well, right, and what I'm saying is that a lot of those standards have been relaxed, not just in the last ten years, but in the last two or three years when it comes to things like multifamily housing. And so, not that I support those relaxed development standards that have been made, but I do think a case can be made that one of the reasons it probably wasn't desirable was because they realized that a more favorable environment would be coming down the line.
So the only thing I'd say in closing is the only saving feature for me tonight, knowing how this vote is going to go, is what Commissioner Smith said, it'll fall to a future commission to review it again. So proceed with whatever motion you'd like.
Let's have a motion, please. Let's have a motion, please.
I thought I heard Commissioner Smith say he wanted to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to not approve it.
To not approve what? Let's be clear on what we're voting.
Moving forward with the master plan. We'll second it, let's call for a vote.
Okay, I thought we were voting about the relocation of the RV park, not the master plan. We didn't advertise that we were going to.
Well, moving forward.
I think this, that's not the correct motion.
Make a motion. No one's making a motion, so. Make a motion.
So there is a motion, you know, the discussion and the agenda item that was here involves specifically the relocation of the Clackamet RV Park, but Commissioner Smith has made a motion about the moving forward, I believe, and he can correct me if I get it wrong, not approving the, sorry, the Clackamet Park master plan. Is that correct, Commissioner Smith?
I'll remove my motion.
You're withdrawing?
Yes.
Are you withdrawing your second?
Yeah, there's no motion to second.
Okay. Let's have a motion about the specific item that's on the agenda.
I move to approve the Clackamet Park master plan.
As presented?
Yes.
Not moving the RV park.
Correct.
There's a second.
Second.
He's saying we're not.
Not moving it in the proposed.
Yeah, moving forward with the master plan, which is exactly what.
Which is moving it to the McDonald's Lot, correct.
Point of order.
Yes.
The master plan is approved.
It's the RV part.
So the motion tonight is whether or not to approve the alternative location.
Right, correct, that's what I was trying to get at.
Is that correct?
So you have an approved master plan. What you have before you is not an amendment to that master plan as much as several options of moving forward. One motion I might suggest is that, a motion to, to, to not move forward with any amendments to the master plan.
Regarding the RV park.
Regarding the relocation of the RV park.
That's the motion.
But we also have to understand, is the current plan that the RV park moves to what's described as a McDonald's Lot, is that the current plan?
The current plan shows RV park move.
Okay, just need to be clear on that.
Can you remove that?
Okay, I will resend.
And make the new motion as specified by.
Resend the previous motion, the previous motion.
We're only talking about the alternative proposal for the RV park. So the motion has to say, we are either approving the alternative option or we are not approving the alternative option.
Right. Because the issue that we run into is the two tax lots haven't been categorized as institutional for us to have the ability to move them yet.
And that's kind of.
And we would need to do that in order to, and we would need to make that amendment to the Parks Master Plan.
And we have a motion that we are, your motion was to not accept the alternative location for the RV park.
Leaving it as identified as a McDonald's Lot.
Leaving it as it is in the park master plan. That's already been adopted. So just say.
I've moved to reject moving the RV park to the alternative location.
Second.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
No.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
No.
Commissioner, Mayor Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. All right, communications.
We have.
We're going to revisit.
Oh, yes, we're revisiting, yes. Could we, since I don't want to have DeeDee stay here much longer. Okay, I just was going to try to move the Ivy League thing that you wanted to comment. Okay, so let's go to item seven D, which is approval of a contract to do what I would call, what I call Phase Two of the diversity, equity, inclusion program that we had started, and we have Mr. Foils.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, sounded like there were just a couple of questions that you wanted to discuss. I captured, I think, three that Commissioner Mitchell noted. A couple of things came to mind. I think primarily was concern about the price tag of one hundred and fifty thousand, right? I quickly looked just for some more background information. The quotes ranged from about one hundred and two up to four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for, you know, of the twenty-eight proposals that we received. It's kind of not surprising that a good number of them were really close to one hundred and fifty thousand because it's pretty easy to see how much we budgeted for this project. And I think your other question was about the team that was presented. Lamont did present a team of four that makes up his new organization of Triangle Advising Group. One, see, Lamont would serve as the project lead. There's a person who focuses on communication and marketing, another individual with a background of HR and organizational culture, and then the fourth team member was more of an analyst, and actually somebody who came with him from his time at MGT. Then I think there was another question about his capacity or how many other projects he might, if I remember right, I believe he said he has two other contracts currently, and we would be the third. So he expressed plenty of capacity to help us throughout the sixteen months that these projects would take.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions?
Oh, comment. I thought Mr. Mitchell made some good observations, and I actually thought Mr. Differed made some observations about what is a goal and when the thing becomes integral to our operations. And, yeah, we did allocate one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this in the budget, and I think the discussion should be, at various levels of spending, what do we get? I mean, if he said he allocated four hundred thousand, the bid would have been four hundred thousand. So maybe we should, when this comes up for review, maybe we have a discussion about what do various levels of expenditure get us and what do we accomplish, not necessarily going straight to the one hundred and fifty thousand. I believe, I believe in.
Yeah.
Do you go over that?
Well, I don't have it all in front of me, but last year, we approved a, the framework that included a set of priorities and initiatives, kind of a list of things that the previous work identified are things that we'd like to work on, put effort into. And so when we put together this new scope, we took a good number of those and said, all right, these are some of the priorities or some of the initiatives that that previous work identified, and that's what we presented. But to your point, yes, it's hard to gauge the appropriate budgeting with correlation to what those initiatives that we put forth. It was interesting to see the wide range of proposals, some of them not actually hitting all of our asks. The top ten that we really dug down into did a good job of at least acknowledging our asks, the goals or the initiatives that we put forward in that scope. Lamont did a really good job of being able to kind of show how he wanted to attack each of those initiatives.
Do you happen to remember the range of contractual values proposed by the respondents?
Sorry, can you rephrase? Do you mean how much?
From what to what were the responses to accomplish the task we were assigning?
Yeah, we didn't do that analysis of kind of breaking down whether their proposed projects matched with the dollar amounts that they were proposing? Is that what you're asking?
Well, you put forth an accomplished set of tasks that you wanted, and the respondents would bid that, and then they, some might come in higher or lower than that which, than the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure. Do we have those numbers?
Yes.
Okay, what's the range of values by the respondents that were qualified to respond appropriately to that which was put before them?
Yeah, I know the full range, one hundred and two thousand up to four hundred and seventy-four thousand. I couldn't break down, I might be old on the fly, but of those top ten that kind of met our. uh, I might be old on the fly, but of those top 10 that kind of met our, did an adequate job demonstrating that they could meet all of our asks. I don't have that in front of me.
Do we have $150,000 proposal by, by the respondent, or we have not yet heard it?
What was the question?
We heard it. He was here. Okay, yeah.
So I guess what I recall from the, the interview process is that one of the things that I noted in the people that we interviewed were that because they were not super familiar with our community, they had a lot of more, more time allocated to reinventing the wheel. And that is not something I was personally interested in seeing because we'd already been there, done that. They were talking about assessing the community again, doing all of the tasks that we had already done. What I was looking for in the proposals was how to take what we already have and move us to the next level so that we can get the training and the implementation that we need to do this on our own. And I went back and looked at our, our goal strategies, and we have, you know, reengage our task force to provide, uh, relevant experiences. We didn't get as much into that as I hoped we did in the first phase, but that they will be our eyes and ears, and they will be a standing committee of some sort, I hope, in the future. And we talked about training our community, our staff people, so that we can have them be the facilitators of our process rather than hiring a consultant for the next round. And then we talked about establishing our committee, which will, uh, as an employee committee, which will serve as an internal process for us to move these initiatives forward. So we're, what I was looking for was the grounding and the foundation to allow for Oregon City to take us to the next level that we could do on our own. I am not interested in having continuing, ongoing consultants, but I really think from my perspective, and I'm only speaking for myself, that we're not ready to do this on our own yet. We need more training. I, I'm not, I'm not, you know, as a person of color, I'm not saying I could implement a DEI process here. I can only speak to the process from my own lived experience. And that's kind of what we need from our community members, is what we need from our staff, so that we can stand on our own two feet in Phase Three and move this forward to what Oregon City needs because we will have the staff that has the training, we will have a DEI committee that will have the training, and we can do this ourselves. I'm not looking at this as an ongoing consultant process. I'm looking at it as an ongoing Oregon City-led initiative that we do ourselves.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. Mr. Gifford's comments about, it is, it is this ongoing forever instead of initiatives. So, yeah, I can appreciate that. It's hard to blend these.
I saw a really interesting comment in, in his, um, proposal. It says, "We believe in making ourselves obsolete." And if, and if this, as you just alluded to, and as Mr. Gifford alluded to, if, if this expenditure gets us to the point where we no longer need outside help and it becomes a natural part of how we do business, then it'll be money well spent.
I think that's why I supported this particular consultant because I saw him and his company teeing us up to do that.
Yeah.
The other ones, I did not quite see us getting to that level. And like I said, I was not interested in us reinventing the wheel. We've already been through the process. We know what we know, and we know where we need to go. And I wish that we had, you know, more like-minded community members like William and others who understand what we need to do with this. But we have other people who are totally not aware, and maybe they don't know. And this is going to be an opportunity for us to explain that to them. Just because this is a diverse commission now, doesn't mean that it's always going to be that way. I mean, you know, we, we have, uh, we've got, we've got some miles we need to travel down this road, and it's not going to be pleasant all the time. It's not going to be fun all the time, but I'm hoping it's going to be more fun than unpleasant. But there's going to be some truths that people are gonna maybe feel comfortable with sharing that's gonna make, I can tell you right now, it's gonna make me uncomfortable, but maybe I need to work on being more uncomfortable with that discomfort because it is, it's somebody else's reality and somebody else's truth, and I can't deny that.
Well, first, I'm grateful that we're having this discussion. From the beginning, when this was presented to us, like I said in response to William, from the beginning, I had issues with this, and I'm grateful that now that we're at the point of almost approving it, that we're being able to have a little bit more of a robust discussion about this. Every step of the way, I've, I've had these same concerns, and because of those concerns, I've had people reach out to me and say, "Why, why don't you support this?" implying that this is something that I'm against. And I, and I'll just note that as someone who grew up in this city, as a person of color, I don't think that anyone can question my commitment to wanting to make this city more fair and just and equitable for all. I also just want to make sure, uh, that we're doing this in a fiscally sustainable manner. And from that first budget meeting, I said, "We need to do this in a way that it just becomes all-encompassing in every part of what we do as a city, and that doesn't need to be contracted out." Um, and the difficult part for me is that we're not going to be here for future budgets, and so it's not as though we can dictate whether or not this is something that is an investment in the future or not. Um, that's been one of my struggles as well. And so, um, I appreciate hearing more information about the consultant's, um, team because hearing that there is more than just one person, as it was prior to doing the Phase One, I guess it might be called, um, hearing that we would be getting more than just that, uh, makes me feel better about this. Uh, but again, since I will be here for the next, uh, biennial budget, um, this is still going to be a concern that I have about whether we're still, uh, spending six figures on a consultant on, which, again, I want to be successful, um, but making sure that it's money well spent. So I'll just leave it at that.
MGT was not a one-person shop. If it, because that's what I heard you say.
But we have Lamont.
Lamont had a team behind him of, how many people were on this team? I mean, there were five or six people.
Yeah, probably more with the, MGT was a very large consulting organization.
Right, but the person that they sent out to be in our community on the ground was him.
Well, they're.
Primarily.
Yeah, primarily, but there were, there were a couple of other people that came with him. I, I met them.
Okay.
But he was the face of our project. He was the one that committed to coming out.
Right, and that gets to my point, which is that a consultant should not be the face of DEI. The people should be the face of DEI.
He was the face of the project, not the face of our community. He was, he was the MGT lead.
I understand that.
Yeah, he was not our, he was not our DEI face.
Well, you just said that, but.
I, sorry, I misunderstood what you said. He was not.
Okay.
Any other concerns? Do we have a motion? I can't make a motion, so would somebody please make a motion? If I could, I would. Please, let's have a motion. Everybody's sitting here looking at somebody else.
Falling on the sword a few times. Somebody else can step up.
You're not falling on any sword.
In the absence of a motion tonight, what, what happens?
Uh, you have an item before the, the commission to, to the extent no motion is made. I guess it would come back at the next meeting.
Would you make a motion, please?
Who are you looking at?
Oh, either of you or one of you. He will not, okay. Would you make a motion, please, so we can get it, either it's going up or down?
I'll move to approve the contract.
I'll second. Roll call.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Obstain.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Communications City Manager, let's hear about the Ivy League and not the one from Back East with, with the schools. Actually, Ivy League is, you know, all of the streets in, in, uh, Gladstone are named after Ivy League schools.
$90,000 a year now.
I'll go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Lyman.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, thank you. I'll try to be brief as we're getting close to the end of the evening. Um, one of the goals that was put forward in the position that was created earlier with the, uh, Community Engagement Specialist was working on increasing volunteerism in the community, uh, beyond the, the group of, the same group of, you know, 12 very dedicated individuals we see at every event, um, trying to spread that around throughout the community. Um, in one of my many meetings with the city manager, he expressed some ideas that might get some public interest, one of those being an Ivy poll. Uh, subsequently, I had done a post on our Facebook page about some Ivy polling efforts that the city was doing and saw tremendous, uh, positive engagement on Facebook, which, as you know, is very rare to get all positive on anything. Um, in this case, it was incredibly positive. So the idea kind of struck, let's create a group of residents that we can use for Ivy polling events, both that are on city property, other properties, and so forth. Um, I came up with the name, the Oregon City Ivy League, with the slogan, "We Pull Together", um, because puns and marketing always go well. And so the first, the event that Hannah's been working on is coming up on April 20th, and I'll let you talk a little bit more about the event specifically.
So I have a parks background. I used to be a seasonal park ranger, but with both the Bureau of Land Management and, um, U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So when Jared and I first started talking, he brought up this Ivy League, and I said, "That's something that I would absolutely, um, love to start heading." Um, when starting volunteer programs, you want to start smaller. Um, so I connected with both the Parks and Recreation Director and John Lewis, the Public Works, to also get kind of direction of how much support I could get from Parks and Recreation staff and their resources and Public Works and their resources. Um, John Lewis then got me in contact with the Rotary Club because they were hoping to do a cleanup event over at Singer Hill Creek Falls, where they had previously done native plantings in the past. So that's who, um, the Oregon City Ivy League is collaborating with on this first event. Um, I'm capping the amount of volunteers to 20 individuals because of the safety restrictions, um, and the challenges that that specific site has on the north side of the falls. Um, so we will be out there on April 20th. I have 16 out of 20 volunteer slots filled thus far. I'll be reaching out to a variety of different organizations after tonight to be able to fill the rest of those spots. Um, but I'm excited to be able to have engagement, um, from the community to be able, uh, to pull some Ivy and other invasive species.
Any questions? DeeDee, would you like to come up?
I'm contacted.
Did you bring us some Ivy or some?
I wrote a proper, appropriate title.
Or is this implements of destruction to destroy Ivy? Okay, record, name. Just say, just say your name real quick.
Hi, Dorothy Dollsford.
He's sitting right there.
Sorry, this is the first time the.
I'm DeeDee Dollsford. I live in Oregon City.
DeeDee Dollsford, Oregon City. I've lived here for, since 1975, and I'm also on the board of Oregon City Parks Foundation.
Why don't you just tell us about these things, since some of these people don't pull Ivy? Quick piece of equipment do you have?
Let me tell you something. Oregon City Parks Foundation has been around.
DeeDee, move the mic so it's by your face.
Well, it's also really hurting.
I know.
You got great hearing aids, but whoa, I can really hear now. Um, so anyway, Oregon City Parks Foundation has been around for about nine years, and we've been focusing on Ivy. We have engaged in our, with our community a lot. Mike is on our trifold. We have removed containers full of Ivy out of Waterboard Park and a couple others. However, we've made a, a large investment in tools, and, um, these are two of them that are strictly for basic Ivy removal. Um, they're very dangerous, and we always teach each person how to use them. We only give them one tool. Um, but to remove Ivy, you don't need a whole heck of a.
DeeDee, do they have names so that people know what you're talking about?
A sickle and a root, a root chopper. But that's it. There's, it's basically an Ivy sickle. You run it down the tree, removes all the greenery immediately because you can't see the vines. This gets in and gets to the vines. We have got a couple of other things. Those vines around the trees can be the size of my wrist or the size of my calf. They're huge. Now, how serious are we going to take this Ivy League? I don't know how much money our master plan, or not master plan, but our, our budget has allotted. But if we're going to get serious about this, we have to be serious. We need to be able to reach out to our private citizens that have these invasive weeds, and they need to take care of it. There's no reason HOAs can't take care of it. There's nonprofits that owe a lot of, on a property. They should be able to take care of, even just ringing the trees. If you go down, and we all have seen it, go down South End Road, those trees look like grim reapers, and they're going to come toppling at any moment. I'm surprised they, well, many of them already have. Anyway, we need to, and we're going to make this outreach. We need to be able to identify and pressure our, our citizens. It's, you can say, "Let, let it lay." That's sad, but hard to remove off Steve Hills without a controller doing it. But there's no reason why you can't get the Ivy off the trees and save those trees and save the hill. Now, I think we need to pressure our private landowners and our HOAs that have acres and acres and acres of these, when they have their resources for private people, but not necessarily city. Clackamas County Watershed Council has a private program for Ivy removal.
DeeDee, you're down to five seconds.
Okay, and also Clackamas River Basin just got a grant for doing this. Reach out to us. Someone's are joining our meetings.
Thank you, DeeDee. So do you need anything from us?
Just, it was just a chance to let you know what was going on before we, you know, put the big word out and started getting more resources.
Put the word out.
Thank you.
It's a great program.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, this is the baby steps to a climate action plan. Just to let you know.
It's still in my back pocket.
It's in my front pocket all the time.
Okay, so the City Manager, um, Mr. Wiley sent out to us a commission meeting calendar, and we noted a few things, and I hadn't even read my commission report when I got a call from my brother saying, um, "Will you be able to come down for Christmas vacation after the first of the year?" And I said, "Well, we have a meeting scheduled for January 1st, which I don't think we're having." And then Jacob said, "Please, look in the packet." So you would like our?
Just, yeah, essentially the commission controls their calendar. Uh, what the code does say is that, um, if a regularly scheduled meeting falls on a holiday, the commission meeting will be the next day. Um, but once again, you control your calendar schedule. So really, this is about, um, Juneteenth, so Janu-, June 19th, 2024, we are, we are closed as a holiday. So do we want to meet on the 20th or cancel that meeting? Um, January 1st, 2025, a Wednesday, do we want to meet on January 2nd? Obviously, we're going to have swearing ins, uh, that have to occur, do a ceremonial meeting. Um, looking for a little bit of guidance there.
So what's your question?
You're just.
I will not be, I will not be commenting on the 2025 meetings.
Yeah, I think you can comment on the 2025.
Yeah, July, July 3rd is a question also, isn't it?
Yes.
It was just pointing it out as, you know, I think there's just a lot of things happening around the holiday, you know?
Okay, well, let's just, what does everybody, let's just take them one at a time. Should we meet on June, well, obviously, June 19th is a holiday. It's closed. We're closed. So do we want to meet the next day or just cancel the meeting? We still have our meeting on the 5th, and we have a meeting on the 11th. If there was some business that we needed to take care of, we could possibly do it as part of that work session, rather than meeting on the 20th. So I don't know. So anybody want to meet on the 20th? Rocky? Just, it's either yes or no.
It doesn't matter. That, that's.
That's, yeah, it's either yes or no. Frank? Nope.
Well, it depends on what our overtime pay is.
Holiday pay.
Yeah, overtime.
We get holiday pay.
The compound on zero.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I would prefer if the, the schedule is not too much that we consolidate it with a work session, but if it's, it turns out to be too much, then I don't have a problem doing the Thursday.
Um, I have the Oregon Mayor's Conference on the 20th.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, would that be South Fork as well, probably, right?
Uh, no, we meet on South Fork as the 26th.
Okay.
26th of June. Mike, do you want to cancel or keep it?
Well, the only thing, um, what, if we cancel the 20th, it seems like.
Well, the only thing, I'm, what, if we cancel the twentieth, it seems like.
No, we cancel the ninth, nineteenth, which is our regular day.
Um, the next meeting would be July third, and that to me is going to be even tougher to, yeah, reschedule, and we can't cancel both of them.
Yes, we can.
Well.
It's our schedule, so.
Yeah.
Adam's suggestion is that we combine the meeting on the eleventh with anything else that we might have.
So have a combination work session and regular meeting on the eleventh?
If we have enough, if, what do we, do we have a work session scheduled? Do we have items we know that are gonna go on that one yet?
I don't think we're out, out that far.
Okay, good, see, we're not that far ahead, so we can do whatever.
And that works.
And I already know I can't do July third, so.
Yeah, nor, nor can I.
Okay.
Or we'd prefer not to, anyway.
Okay, looks like we're gonna combine the eleventh of June, and then we will not meet on the third.
Okay, so no meeting on the nineteenth and no meeting on July third.
And we went triple overtime. So our next meeting would be the ninth.
So should, yeah, so would that be another one where we might need to combine if there's any emergency stuff?
We might, we might need to combine some stuff on the ninth.
Okay.
And what about, uh, Frank, you get the first vote on January the first?
It's never good.
I don't think I have standing to vote on January first.
You, you have, well, you have standing right now, you're still a sitting commissioner, you have standing. If it was January the second.
The answer is no, on January first.
Okay, no on January first, all right, Rocky?
Yeah, that's a no.
That's a no? Mike?
Nope.
Nope?
Hard pass.
Okay, we've got not meeting on January first, we will swear in people on the next regularly scheduled meeting or whenever we, you schedule it.
Okay, so not, not need it on January second, the Thursday?
Nope.
Okay, so then we would get back to that work session, so.
Yeah.
We'll be swearing.
We could either do a special meeting on the seventh, swear people in and be done, and then have our work session on the, well, no, the schedule screwed up because our meeting for January is the fifteenth, we can't have a work session on the fourteenth, the day before, because that would be like too much.
No, it would be on the.
Seventh.
Yeah.
We may have our work session on the seventh, or a regular meeting on the seventh.
I think we would need to have a regular meeting to swear in.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we have a regular meeting just to do that, unless there's anything else that's exciting.
I just want to check one thing about.
He's checking.
Office.
Is there some law that says we have to swear people in on the first regularly scheduled meeting, and if it's a holiday, then it isn't our first regularly scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
We'll bring Frank back just for a cameo appearance.
So we'll.
Yeah, do that.
So we'll, we'll, we'll have that, the swearing in ceremony on that January, uh, seventh.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
Is there any further business of the commission? Anybody want to say anything under communications? Any meetings coming up, C four, you guys, when is the retreat?
In June.
Oh, in June, okay, all right. Thank you to staff, thank you to the community, well, they're not here, but anyway, thank you to Jared and Hannah for handling the, uh, if I was mayor, we wrangled that, we managed to pull it off, and thank you to the rest of the staff that's here tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you, chief.